Lori and I are here tonight to talk about something that we've been doing some investigative work on for the last couple of weeks, which is online registration. The goal being to simplify something that parents and staff get very involved in a very labor-intensive practice every year, and we thought there was a better way. So, go ahead. Pre-2010, you remember, you had big documents, big packets of documents sent home, parents filled out forms in hand, they would do 10-plus forms and they would have oftentimes identical information written on each and every form, and then they needed to get it back to the district. So, in 2010, we tried to move it into something more green, which was something the district wanted to do anyway, and so we said it was a paperless way of doing it. And the parents got their documents online. They went to our website, clicked on link, and filled out the same 10-plus forms with the same multiple times of information on each one, and then we asked them again to bring it back to the district. So, there were some positives. The parents really liked filling the forms out online on their computer. They could do it whenever, wherever, they didn't lose the paperwork, they could, it was very, very quick and easy. But, the negatives, again, what I mentioned, and also, I got a few people telling me, "Green, ha, it is not green. You may have saved paper, but we didn't." So, we heard it, but it was at least a step towards some online version of this. So, our goal is to go from the left side, forms, 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 with the parent saying, "Help," or that could be a registrar in our office saying, "Help," to this, which is the very happy person with speed, simplicity, and accuracy. So, that was our goal as we started out. What we did, too, was to contact representatives at the high school and at District 67, and they were also really interested in looking at this. We evaluated two different companies, two applications, InfoSnap and Easy Registration, and it was a pretty unanimous agreement amongst all three of us that Easy Registration was the easiest for parents, it was going to be the best for the district, so that's where we went.
So, I'm going to show you a little bit about this and explain, as we go along, why we really selected this. And so, if you look at this interface here, this is kind of what it would look like for a parent. They would probably initially access this from a link on the website, on the school website, and they would come here and they'd either be a new user, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a minute, or a returning user, in which case, we would have supplied them with a username and a password, they could log in and begin filling in information, or I should say, actually editing or updating information, because when they would look at their students, all the information would already be in there from Power School. We'll pull it all over from Power School, it would be in there for them. If you look, you probably can't see it really clearly, but there's a little button that allows for Spanish, so it comes in automatically in Spanish if they select it. There are also voice-overs as they move from page to page to help, you know, with questions and understanding what you're supposed to do. So, and the other nice thing is, at the end of the process, for those parents, well, for both sets of parents, we can put a link to RevTrack, so then it would just take them right over to the RevTrack site. So, our new parents would have to log into the system, and they would create an ID and a password. This can be done at home. This could be for our kindergarten parents, as well as any new parents to the school district. And they'd use that information to access their student information at any time. And we would also ask them for their email address early on, so then we would be able to email them with any future communications, unless, of course, they don't have an email address, in which case, they wouldn't supply that. So, the parents then would begin registration by entering data about themselves, and all the information is collected and distributed to each form in which it's needed. So, if that same information is needed on three forms, it's automatically filled in, they don't have to type it in again. And again, they have those instructional voice-overs should they need it, or highlighting information, we want to make sure that they read or they notice. Then, the parents will be directed to fill in student information. They'll do one student at a time, and what's nice about this is, we can actually have data fields that are dependent. So, if a parent has a student who has an allergy, they might click "Allergy," and then they would have other fields come up, maybe saying which allergies they have, and they select which allergies. If their child doesn't have an allergy, they wouldn't see those extra fields, so it's really nice in that way to move the process along quickly. The other feature we really, really liked is that the address information is tied to the U.S. Postal Service. So, if a parent begins to type in their address, they're going to get a drop-down menu with the list of their addresses, so we make sure that the information is accurate. Sometimes, parents type in Avenue, sometimes they don't. Sometimes, they type in AV, sometimes they type in AVE. This way, it will automatically be consistent, so that was a feature we thought was really very important for accuracy. After they review their first student and look at the information, then they have the option to say, "Do I have additional students?" And they can say, "Yes," and automatically, that key information will be filled in for them. They don't have to type it again, things like their address or the "Alert Now" information, so we can decide which information would automatically go to other siblings. Then, the parents, and this would be for all parents, so the information prior to this, if you are a parent currently in the system, you would just be editing what was already there. But, all parents would then be presented with policy or agreements, whatever we come up with, for example, the student handbook or your acceptable use policy. And they will be required to initial it, acknowledging that they have read that, and this is what I like next, is they have to actually click on it, open and scroll down, that doesn't mean they have to read it, but they do have to scroll down, to actually initiate, initial it before they can move forward. So, at least we know that they have, at least had to open it, so we thought that was a good feature there. Then, the parent is presented. At this point, most of our parents would be finished, and this is all done at home. So, returning parents, they'd be done, they're ready to go, we'd have a link sending them off to RevTrack. For new parents, or, for example, sixth-grade parents, where I think they have to have a health form or medical form in, in sixth grade, they would have one more step. So, then, what would happen is, when they're not quite done yet, they will be then given a list of, "This is the other documentation we need you to bring into the district office." That just has to be done. They could print out that list, they could save it as a PDF. So, one other thing that we, is recommended, that for parents who don't have internet access at home, and maybe don't even have a computer at home, that we would have a station in the district office where they could come in and just fill out those forms, or somebody who needs some extra help could just come in and then kind of walk them through that process. So, this would tell them, "Okay, what do I need to bring?" They're done online at home. So, for those who need to come into the district office, then the registrar would take whatever documents they need, so whether that's a birth certificate or proof of residency, whatever it is, and they scan it into the system. And when they scan it in, it automatically goes to a content management system and is filed away for that particular student. And what else is neat about that is, then, you can have the system send alert to key personnel saying, "Oh, a new document has been put into the system," and you can decide who can see that and who cannot. At this point, then, if you have any documents that parents need to sign, they suggest having a signature pad, and the parent can sign right there, just like you do at the grocery store, at Lowe's, or any of those. You sign the signature pad, and that signature could be uploaded on any documents that require their signature. It would automatically go onto all the documents that would need that. And so, they don't have to sign multiple times, plus, we also, it timestamp's it, so we know exactly when they did sign it, which is a nice feature. Then, the registrar is ready to go, and she can then take this data, check it over, make sure it's accurate, and either one at a time, or is a batch file, she can then send it right off to Power School. So, they have this middleware software that just automates that process for them. The other really nice feature about this one is, we can have it online all year long. So, we have a parent who changes a cellphone, changes email address, they can go into this system, and once a week, or whatever we deem, the registrar would look through the information for new information that's been put in there, and then send it off to Power School. I think this would be particularly helpful with when we have emergency closings and things, and parents decide, say, "A mom now goes back to work. She doesn't want to be contacted at home, she wants to be contacted at work or on her cellphone." She can put that into the system, and it can get into Power School easily. So, it really saves a lot of time and data entry. This screen is that backend piece. This is not something parents would see. This piece is where all those documents that we've scanned can be archived and kept here, and you can actually see when somebody opens up that document, it's timestamped, who it is, when they've opened it, and they're all PDFs. So, this would be one student with all their registration objects. And again, you can decide who can see that and who cannot see that. And then, on this page is, let's say they forgot something, they forgot their proof of residency, so it actually puts a placeholder in the system. And then, our, the registrar can run reports and say, "Okay, I want to know who is missing pieces of documents." She runs a report, sends out an email to them saying, "You forgot, you're still in need of this." Now, if they don't have email, she would have to call them and let them know, but she can run a report quickly and see who has done it and who has not. And the other thing we really liked about this one is, it's very easy, it's customizable, configure, we can configure it any way we want. We can have LBES with some things, LBMS with some things. We can collect any data we want to, we can create any forms we want to, we can add, delete properties on their wizards. They really give you a lot of management and capabilities that way, which we thought was really, really nice. And they will do it for us initially, but we can also do it, which is nice, and it's not too difficult to do. It comes fully configured, so we'll tell them, "This is what we want." They will configure it from the beginning, and then they provide site training and tech support for all administrative users, and as I said before, the administrative users also can be assigned different levels of permission. So, why we really like it? It's because it's a flexible, secure platform for two-way communication with parents throughout the year, that was a key feature. It has that document management system. For those techies, it does run on a SQL database, and it allows for automated archival, it accommodates the Spanish translation, and it has a nice, easy handoff to Power School. These are just some of the references. They are relatively new to the Midwest, and actually, Jean Amundson and I heard about them when we were at a Power School Users Conference in Michigan, and so, this was kind of their first experience. So, they're more out on the East Coast, but they do have a number of schools that they're working in. And actually, the owner's background is, was for, oh, who were they? Xerox. He worked for Xerox, so he's very much into the document management systems. If we decide, if you would decide you wanted to implement it this fall, just wanted to kind of give you a timeframe of when, what would happen. So, we present, as we are today, if you approved it in March, they said they could have it ready for registration in May, so the beginning of May, you could start registration. But, they need that period to get all the documents together and get it all organized. There are some hardware requirements. They currently do not host, they are looking into that, but they're not, at this point, ready to do that, so we would have to host it. It does require three servers, however, in this day and age, you can actually buy one physical box and have three, by virtualizing it, have three separate servers. Kind of got an idea of the cost, it would be around $10,000, something like that, for that kind of a server. You also need the document scanner, that's around 800, you could maybe go a little bit less, depending on what we really, what size we decide we need it for, and then they have the signature pad. We already have a Windows workstation, it does require the Windows workstation just because of the scanner, because of the scanner drivers, although, we could test it out on our Mac and see if it will work. But, we already have one of those workstations, so we don't, we wouldn't have to purchase that. Kathleen's now going to talk about the costs.
So, what we did was, we looked at it in three different ways, and the first one is District 65 only, and then, with the hopes that we could get 67 and 115 to consider doing this with us at the same time, so that we could have some cost savings. That is to be determined, and so, but, right now, if we did it on our own, the setup, installation, training, and the configuration, 17,000, the annual licensing fee doesn't change at all, you'll see the same number there each time. So, you can look at that as, we have about 1,000 students, it's $3.75 a student, and for a total of just under $21,000. And so, that 17 is the first year, after that, we just have the annual licensing fee. This would be if we did it with 67, and there are some definite cost savings. The, we as a total number of students represent about 31.25% of the total, with the remaining 67% being 67 students. So, we kind of did the math that way. So, the District 65 share would be 8,320, again, the 37.50, our total being 12,000 versus the 20, almost 21,000. And if we could get everybody to do it together, there's additional cost savings, and there were under 10,000 for the total, and so, it's about a savings of half for the first year, and then, again, as I said, the licensing continues on. The issue, though, is that 67 and 115 are probably not going to be ready to do it this year. They would like to, but we got every indication that it would probably be a little more difficult for them to get started right away.
Definitely 115, because they've already done the registration, they would probably look to get it, I'm not sure what time they register their kids at the high school, is it December, January? I don't know, any parents know? But, I think it's early, early in the year, so they want to have it definitely before next year's, you know, even for us, the kindergarten registration. So, I know they won't wait, they'll wait till next year, but Cornelius was unsure about, you know, the elementary district.
They were, though, however, going to start presenting it to committees and hopefully their board pretty soon.
But, they, both 67 and 115 really liked this idea, and like this, it's just a question of timing more likely for them.
Maybe we could discuss with the company, an arrangement where if one or two districts start it one year and the third one starts the second year, we can still get the discount.
Yeah, that's possible. I'm suspecting it's going to be one district that would be ready to start the first year, would be us.
Yeah.
And just from what they've said, it sounds like it's going to be a little longer that they need to have to get through for approvals.
And if we had an idea that 67 and 115 really do want to do it, but they're going to have to wait just because they have some other, 67 registration process is a little different than ours, we only have one location, as the high school only has one location, they have multiple, so it's a little trickier for them. There might, we might also be able to share in hardware costs, that would be another.
Or work a contract out with the three districts, where there's a phase in, one district goes first, and the other two follow, and there's a package that's arranged.
Yeah, definitely the goal was, how can we realize some cost savings?
Right.
Especially since we kind of brought them into it, how, you know, we're bringing you some potential customers, how does that benefit us? So, which one do I push?
I think that's it.
That's it.
When do we send our current, what's our timeframe for current registration? Is it, it's not as late as May, is it?
No, but we get things.
Oh, it trickles back in, right.
There is no deadline date that was magic, that everybody got everything back in. Last year, I think we put the, all the documents online, probably in April or late March, and then, we got them all the way along. This, we would have, think, a little bit better opportunity to, you know, say, "Please get them in by a certain date," but at the same time, the, it's quicker and easier and just no need for them to drop anything off, so.
For returning parents.
For returning parents, which is obviously the bulk of our parents, so. So, anyway, I would hope that, because it wouldn't take as long.
That, starting in May, if we decide to do it this year, that we'd have enough time, because I don't think you really got things.
No, and even if we already had this in place, and say, it's next year, we've done it already, we probably wouldn't need to start it until May then either.
And the lag time between the March, if we make the decision in March, and the May implementation is so that they can pre-populate all of our data?
Yes, yeah. They need, they need a certain amount of time to do that.
Right, so that anybody, when you come in to register, even your new kindergarteners, all your information is there.
Okay. I would like to recommend that we have the finance committee take a look at this, because this hasn't gone to finance yet, has it? Because I'm sure we have some staff savings in here, and I would like.
Like to think there's something in there.
Yeah, finance to take a look and bring a recommendation back to us next month.
Great. Okay, thank you. All right, communications and questions from visitors. Okay, there are none. All right, next, Kate with the PTO report.
Hello. Last month, the PTO hosted The Race to Nowhere on February 3rd. Originally, we had 300 tickets for this, and it sold out pretty quickly. The tickets were free of charge, but they were registered quickly. However, if you recall, we had the big snowstorm the night before, and schools actually closed that day. A big thank you to Nate and John for coming out and helping set up the middle school, so we could still show the movie. And we still got about, a little under 200 people that were able to come out, so that was, we had good turnout for that. And on February 10th, we held the discussion panel about the showing of the film. I would say we probably had about 25 people there, and a big thank you to Carly Jacks for organizing the panel, putting that together, I think it was very useful, and we're looking forward to maybe doing some more discussion groups and things with LEED around the film. They're actually putting, they held a discussion panel at Gorton earlier in the month, and they're actually putting videos of each of those panels, panelists' discussion topics on their website, so people can go on there, click on, and watch, just, they don't have to watch the whole discussion, they can just watch parts of it, so I think that'll be useful. At LBES and LBMS, the PTO held teacher appreciation dinners at both schools during the conferences, and had francescas provided for dinner. We also hosted the Valentine's Day, or helped coordinate the Valentine's Day parties at the elementary, and the middle school reps baked cupcakes, I think, for the middle school. The enrichment update, we had the Wheel of Wisdom come to the middle school in February, and that's coming to elementary in, I think, March 18th. Also, on February 10th, we had a Mad Scientist Assembly for the second graders, and this was done on sound, sound basics. On March 3rd, for kindergarten through fifth, we'll have two sessions with an assembly on historical perspectives, and this will be focusing on Amelia Earhart. Apparently, it's a full theatrical production, so should be interesting. I wanted to take this time, too, to say, so far this year, we've raised $733 with people collecting the box tops on certain products, and this is a great way, if we have any community members that are listening, if they don't even have a kid in the child, sorry, a child in the district, this is a way that they can help support the schools. If they just want to clip their box tops and send them into either the middle school or the elementary office, it's a great way to support us. And then, of course, our last big plug is our spring fundraisers coming up in less than a month. The theme is "Watch Us Grow," Saturday, March 19th, at Lake Forest Sports Cars. New this year, you can purchase your tickets online, if you go to www.lb65.org, and then go to the PTO tab, and then go to the web store, you can purchase tickets there or make a cash donation. Also, this year, we are going to have web store checkout, so at the event, you won't even have to worry about checking out from your evening's auction purchases or event purchases, you'll be able to later go into the web store and check out with a credit card from the comfort of your own home. And then, too, we encourage you to go, again, to the website, click on the PTO tab, and click on the cute little flower logo for "Watch Us Grow," and please donate a silent auction item. We're looking for any sort of items people might have that we can auction off and raise money. Also, this year, we are collecting items from the students, kindergarten through fifth grade, and we're creating themed baskets from those items, and those will also be auctioned off at the event, so hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Dr. Esplin, Superintendent Report.
Thank you. I have one item to report on tonight. I've been paying particular attention to one bit of news that's been going on. Governor Quinn recently came out with the notion that he wanted to consolidate our 875 districts in Illinois to 300, and this isn't an unfamiliar theme, this happened back in the 80s, and once again, in 2005, there was some discussion on this, too. But, in light of the economy, I think there is some political traction certainly to be made for this. I've been trying to get to the specifics of what the governor has said, and he's basing his goal of 300 districts on enrollment, and enrollment clearly would be a place where a district like ours would be a target, but I do find it curious on a couple of levels. One, first of all, he claims he can save $100 million on consolidation, and typically, the studies that I've seen on consolidation don't show to save money, so I'm not really sure where that $100 million in savings is going to be coming from, and if it's a cost-saving venture, I'm not really sure how, taking a district like ours that gets 4% of its revenue from the state, and putting it with another district that gets 2% of its revenue from the state, is really a cost-saving venture. So, I'm really keeping track of this. As all of you know, I'm from the part of the state where they would be concerned about this for another reason. The district that I grew up in is 188 square miles, and I had 51 in my graduating class, and I believe it's much smaller now. So, when you start talking about consolidating those districts, then students run buses for hours upon hours, and that's clearly not a positive move either. So, Illinois is a very diverse state, that's always relied on local control, but I am very curious about this bill in particular, obviously, because it could potentially impact us. I've heard this before, but in these interesting economic and political times, I think we have to take it seriously enough to at least keep track of it, and so, I've placed some calls to some friends of mine in Springfield to kind of keep track of it for us, so. I will update you as updates come along, but that is of some particular interest to me at this time.
Thank you. Student Services and Curriculum, Dr. Henrickson.
Thank you. Well, another busy month. This past week, we began our writing committee, K-5 group, Peggy Cuttre, Denise Salit, and Buffy Stoffer are leading a K-5 initiative, where we're taking a look at all that we do, what we do well, and what we need to do better. They put together a survey just recently and put it out to all the kindergarten through fifth grade staff. Our next meeting is next week, Tuesday, and we'll take a look at the results of that to start narrowing in on what it is that we need to do differently. Once we, once we narrow in on that, we'll take a look at other materials or methodology to support that. I'm hoping we'll make changes through summer curriculum work and then implement next fall. So, that's, that's the hope, and this is a, it's an exciting group. We've got representation from kindergarten through fifth grade of some of our, truly our best, best teacher leaders, so it's. our best, best teacher leaders, so it, it's, good things are coming. Um, Spanish kindergarten through eighth grade has begun its work. Matt Sosado and the Spanish teachers, Brianna, Christie, and Anna, are getting together and they're outlining all that they do. We're creating a massive scope and sequence document of all the skills, communities, connections, cultures, all the five Cs, and from this, we're gonna find where our redundancy is so that we're not teaching greetings over and over again each year, that we're looking at when we're going to master things, and then develop assessments around those mastery points. By condensing what we do, we should be able to do more, and that's, that's been the goal all along for this K-8 curriculum of ours, because we, we know our kids are ready, willing, and able, and we just have to provide it to them in the right way. We've got terrific teachers, they're excited about this initiative, and, uh, and so am I, so more to come on that. We had a busy Friday last week, uh, beginning at the high school, Race to Nowhere, all three districts, uh, brought teachers over to see the, see the movie, and then District sixty-seven and sixty-five, uh, created breakout groups around grade level orientation, so kindergarten through second grade teachers worked together, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth all worked in small groups focused on the age groups that they, uh, they see. Seven to ten in a group is very engaging. Walked around these thirty-two groups in, in the high school, and, and though they only had forty-five minutes, uh, many of them stayed a little bit longer. Uh, some of the things that I picked up were, a lot of us were looking at it as parents first, because we have children and it affects us most deeply that way, and, and it, it, of course, the topic is more of a high school topic, um, but we also had discussions in these groups about 2020 vision, and how the mile-wide curriculum, the inch-deep, uh, focuses on memorization and test-taking, and that kind of curriculum leads to high volume of homework and stress for kids. And what it is that we need to do more of and better is that 2020 vision of ours, that we need to go a mile-deep and an inch-wide. We need to make meaning and relevance of the homework that we give, and we need to give kids more time to think critically instead of memorizing minutia. So those were all kind of comments that were being made in groups that I walked by. I guess that summarizes it. Uh, you know, also, we heard the importance of keeping this conversation going and partnering with parents to watch for the signs of stress in our kids, especially middle school, high school. So there was some deep concern about this. The, uh, the 2020 vision work then continued in the afternoon. We all came back to, to Nate's building, the middle school, and met together in our whole faculty study groups. We began with a, a book review of Mindset by Carol Dweck. Carol Dweck, uh, was one of the top recommendations for our self-directed learning initiative, and, uh, we've been doing a book study of that in the administrative group and, and found that it has application, uh, to a lot of the 2020 vision, but maybe most specifically to self-directed learning. And the idea that if kids can get of the mindset that, that mistakes are opportunities for learning, that they will become more self-directed in their actions. So that's, that's the nutshell, but I encourage you to read it, and we'd be happy to buy you a copy if you'd like. Um, following that half hour, we spent the rest of the afternoon in our groups working on our 2020 vision projects, and the groups are really focusing now in on those essential questions and their action research of, of what they're hoping to do. So there was a lot of real meaty discussion on, well, what does this mean now, and what can we contribute to the rest of the teachers with, with whatever we find through research or through action? So we're looking forward to giving more specifics about that in the, in the days to come. I think that, uh, that covers that. We, uh, the 2020 vision group also, the, the small group, Lori and, uh, Wendy, Wendy Krieger and Lori Brown represented our district in getting together with the high school and District sixty-seven to work on a framework of what 2020 vision means to our communities. And you know what, Lori, if I could have you come up? I apologize because I should've had this printed for you, so we'll have to email it to you, cause I would like you to take a look at it, as we hope that it will represent our districts. After, after you've had a chance to vet it, and of course, not just here, looking at the board, we'll also then take it back to the tri-district board and get their input, and probably, uh, back to our 2020 vision as, as well. Lori, do you wanna say a few words about it?
Uh, yeah, it was, it was an interesting process, because when we first met the first time, so they're representatives from one fifteen and sixty-seven, we all came in with all these different frameworks and we're looking at them all, and then we just, we're trying to figure out, how is this all going to work? How are we gonna narrow this down to something we all felt comfortable with? And I think one of the things we really felt was important is that first sentence right under the title. This is a lens through which we, uh, we will view what we do. So when we look at those curriculum, we'll look through this lens. It's not replacing the curriculum, it's something, it's a way of looking at the curriculum, and then making sure we're embedding these within that curriculum. So that was something we all felt really strongly about. So we kinda broke it into three large categories, personal and social responsibility, so there right at the top is the self-directed learner, which all three districts are focusing on collaboration, ethical principles, civic responsibility, cultural understanding, global awareness. So all we've done at this point, I should say, is define these. So we went through, and we spent no- a number of hours deciding, okay, what does this really mean? Defining this, our 2020 vision group within Lake Bluff also looked through this and said, I like this, I don't like this, you need to consolidate. So we did that, and this is what we've come back with. The one thing, I think the next steps will be, as we look at all these skills, then we're gonna have to say, how are we gonna apply them in the classroom? What does this mean? What objectives would we have in a classroom for this? So that would be the next step, and another suggestion, I think, was also to make it more, uh, kid-friendly, because these are really adult words. This isn't necessarily written in a way that a student would understand it. So our next, uh, step was learning and thinking skills, so we have our curiosity, critical thinking and problem-solving, creativity, innovation, and systems thinking. And then our last group there are the communication literacies, in which we put, uh, research information literacies, techno- technological literacies, and multimedia literacies. So all these kinda come together, there's a lot of little things underneath it, but it was just a way for us to start.
So this, again, is gonna be hopefully the guiding document for our three districts to decide on what's next after self-directed learning, and, and will provide us hopefully with a common vocabulary among our three districts, so when our students go to the high school, they'll have heard some of these things, uh, as well. Uh, questions about any of these things?
Going back to Race to Nowhere, um, what's the, I, I know you mentioned 2020 vision, kinda dovetailing from that, but is there some intentional follow-through being planned, um, off of the Race to Nowhere film and the discussion groups and that kind of thing? I mean, it, it, it was really concerning to, to parents that watched it.
You know, several of the teachers asked that same question, you know? We have a seven-second, uh, attention span, let's not let this go by the wayside, let's, let's make sure we're focused on.
The response of the community was phenomenal in terms of, of people getting tickets to see the film.
I, I think we were thinking that we would report back to the staff on some commonality of their, their comments within their groups, and so we have, we're pretty well into creating a Google Doc of all the different groups, thirty-two groups and their, and their, uh, their feedback on a feedback sheet that we gave them. We'll probably report back to them at a, at an upcoming faculty meeting, and I think, you know, I'm off the cuff now, look to Carly Jacks and our leaders in this area, the social emotional wellness group, to figure out how to keep this, uh, you know, on the agenda.
Parents play a pivotal role, good or bad, in, in that whole scenario. So somehow, we need to bring the parents into that, that whole mix of.
At the panel discussion that.
Getting caught up in, in the same kind of situations that the characters in the film were caught up in.
At the panel discussion that John was a part of, and Carly Jacks, and John Perlis Glassman, um, they, they did a really nice job of, of kind of outlining where we stand with our curriculum and our expectations of, of students, and the high school did a very nice job through Robert Wagner, uh, Jim Sullivan, of going through their focus and their, and their intentionality, and, and Robert Wagner, Wagner was, uh, excellent at, at talking about how he counsels kids at the high school, sometimes away from, uh, too much of a load, and counsels them into helping, uh, develop specialties and, and areas of interest and strengths, kinda like the Strengths Finder that John has been promoting with us, to, to distinguish yourself somehow through something else than all the APs that our kids take. It, it may be much more attractive to the colleges. So again, I think we can begin that message in the ele- in the elementary, certainly in the middle school, as one way, but I, you know, I, I don't know for sure, but I appreciate that you want us to continue with it.
The response of the community, I think, speaks loudly for, for people's interest in the subject.
Did you want me to talk about the calendar committee now, or is that, is that later?
Well, you can do it now while you're up there.
Good, okay. Well, one of the other groups that has met and, and kinda concluded, uh, was a, a calendar committee, Kate was on it, uh, she brought two parents to join us. There were about four teachers that worked over the course of three meetings to look at 2012-13, so we're way out there now, and, and if you will, I'll just. This is just a, a first look, we have plenty of time to look at this. The, the committee began with the high school's, uh, proposed calendar, and it's, it's pretty tight now, I think they're, they'll be, uh, looking at it as well this month. So this is based on their, their vacation schedule, pretty, pretty close to their start day and finish day, although their school year is a little bit longer than ours. It's based on their vacation schedule. We have in there, um, tri-district data and institute dates that are, um, common for parents. Of course, it has our hundred and seventy-six days of instructional time and our, our institute days, staff development, as we've all, as we've done in the past. The one thing I've note that I'll put in, I'll, I'll mention that it isn't in here, we've had, uh, three early release days in the past, and we wanted to coordinate those possibly with Lake Forest High School next year. There's even some discussion as to whether or not, uh, we should have late arrivals. The parents on our committee mentioned that it's difficult to do a, a late arrival at the high school and an early release in the elementary on the same day, um, so we're gonna wait until they publish their late arrival dates for 2012, and then we'll take a look at whether or not we, we could do something similarly.
How many of those do they do at the high school?
Pardon me?
How many late arrival days are there?
I, I think three or four, but I don't know.
In the, okay.
So, um, certainly interested in your input on this, and, and, you know, through John or, or directly to me, back to our calendar committee, we can, uh, we can, uh, make revisions and make suggestions as needed. This was vetted through, uh, many parents, through our parent representatives, and through most of the staff. They had an opportunity several times to look at certain things that we were, uh, suggesting to them. The, the color coding, just briefly there, the purple are the, uh, parent-teacher conferences, the green are the staff development days, and the yellow one in March is, that will be our only waiver day. We'll be, we're, we're suggesting that we'll be in session on Casimir Pulaski Day, so that would not be a holiday on this calendar. This gives us the opportunity to have one snow, a snow day, or emergency day. Wouldn't have worked it this year, but, uh, getting out on a Thursday, June 6th, uh, would give us that, that one additional. And there was some discussion around whether to start on a Monday or a Friday for students, and it was suggested that starting on a Friday, um, works just as well for parents, because parents really like to be there for that meet-the-teacher day anyway, which is within that week, so most people aren't taking vacation that, that last week, so that's why we were suggesting starting on that Friday, the 24th of August.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Continuing in the Race to Nowhere vein, um, Lead is sponsoring a parent university this Saturday on February 26th, and they're gonna continue the discussions and also have discussions on raising teenagers in a digital world and how to manage those challenges. So if you're interested, register on the Lead, Lead website when registration is still open. Um, LDA is sponsoring an exciting event, um, this week at our middle school and also for other area schools. Uh, they are bringing Jonathan Mooney in, uh, to talk to our middle school students, and then after dismissal, the Jonathan Mooney will also talk to the middle school staff. He's the author of Learning Outside the Lines, Um, Overcoming Learning Differences and Achieving Academic Success, and he's, uh, pretty well-known for, uh, motivating and inspiring, so I think we're really fortunate to have that. His, um, afternoon presentation at the school will be followed by an evening presentation for parents, and then on the next day, he'll do some teacher-in-service at the high school, and some of our staff from the elementary is gonna actually access and, and go over there and hear him talk during lunch, lunchtime, so, yeah. Teachers will also have an opportunity, so, pretty exciting. The, um, position for SAP Coordinated Student Assistance Program also actually secured through a Lead grant, had, um, the interviews are finally done, and look soon for a big announcement on the, on the individuals selected who everybody's very, very excited to have come on board and facilitate community with the schools. We, um, had our special ed parent meeting on February 16th of the advisory group for the Special Education Program Review and looking at the feasibility study of NSSCD, and parents from, um, all District sixty-five, sixty-seven, and one fifteen were represented. We took notes and we will publish them on the website as soon as all the participants have a chance to review them, so you can, will be, public will be able to look at those on our website by the end of the week, I would think. Patty Briggs and I attended Inform User Group Meeting, which is kinda nice to tell, see how our data, database is used by other districts and see if we have common problems, actually work together to, just, uh, work through a few glitches, but we, um, we were pretty pleased that we, uh, we were able to talk to them about some of the things they, that we do, that they're not doing yet. And in that, um, inform vein, we'll have, uh, data dive for the administrators on Monday to look at trends in data, look at grade levels, and look at buildings, and just to look at, uh, more globalville, not individual students, and any of you who are interested in attending certainly are welcome. And we will also roll out Atomic Learning that day, Lori's been instrumental, and we got a grant from LD, from the LDA, and Atomic Learning is a, an online subscription service that allows staff, um, potentially students and parents in some instances to access training. If you wanna learn how to use Inspiration, which is a graphic organizing program, if you wanna learn how to use, uh, Word or Excel or many different applications, and even through the assistive technology applications of Kurzweil, or, um, how to use an iPad, how to use an iPod, all kinds of things, and they're just, uh, short and sweet training, and they're broken down into many different steps, so if you just need the basics, or if you just need advanced things, you can access that online, so we're very excited to have that for staff to access, and parents too, when they're struggling with their students' applications.
And could the students access that too?
Yeah, we will have some students, when we target, once staff's trained, first we'll do administrators on Monday, then staff, and then students who are having trouble using programs or maybe need more reminders, we'll be able to have this link and learn how to use the programs without constantly having an adult tell them how to do it, they can just work through it on their computer.
What time is the meeting on Monday for the data dive?
From nine till eleven.
Okay. Great.
Any questions?
Thank you, Ann. Um, president's report, I do not have one, so we will move on to standing committees. 2020 Vision, MJ, anything you wanted to add to Dr. Hendrickson?
Uh, I don't think, and Al, we didn't meet since.
No, there wasn't a meeting since last.
Actually, probably to it ought to be Al's name on here. Carl and I used to be the curriculum committee, but probably Al and I both on the 2020, so.
Okay. We'll get that changed, thank you. MJ, NSSCD?
Does not meet in February.
Okay. Uh, Terry and Eric, finance and facilities?
Did not meet.
Shared services, we did not meet. Strategic plan?
Nope.
Green team?
Did not meet.
Social committee?
No meeting.
Onto action items, uh, first one being personnel recommendations. I move that the Board of Education approves the personnel recommendations as per the attachment.
Second.
Discussion, John, if you could give us the summary?
Sure, uh, we have the resignation of Katie Williams, uh, LBES principal, effective at the end of the year. Uh, resignation of Jody Stone, LBMS science teacher, effective at the end of the year. of the year. Resignation of Deborah Padley, LBES Classroom Assistant, effective at the end of the year. And the resignation of Eric Pingel, District Network Specialist, effective at the end of the year.
Okay. Any additional discussion or questions? Okay, roll call. Roll call, please.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Eric Coney?
Yes.
Kim Burke?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Terry Carney?
Yes.
Okay. Next action item, amending the 2010-2011 School Calendar.
I move that the Board of Education approves the amended 2010-2011 School Calendar to reflect snow days as per the attachment.
Second. Okay. John, if you could give us the summary of that?
Sure. The February 2nd day that we were out was supposed to be a half-day. We moved that day to March 25th, which is the day before spring break. So, that was to be a full day of attendance. So, that will now be a half-day of attendance for students and staff, for staff development. And then, we are going back and taking out April 22nd as not in attendance and making it a day of attendance. So, that's a Friday that was originally not in attendance on the original calendar, but we're taking back one day of the two there. And the other day is Friday, June 3rd. Was, will still be, will then be the last day of school unless we have another emergency day later on in the year, like May 13th we had last year. So, anything can happen. But, at this point, assuming no more emergency days, the last day would be Friday, June 3rd.
And attend for one hour on Friday?
Yes.
Okay. Any additional discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor of amending the 2010-11 School Calendar as presented? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next action item, Resolution to Eliminate the Position of Assistant Principal and Authorize Notice of Decision Not to Renew Administrative Contract.
I move that the Board of Education approves the Resolution to Eliminate the Position of Assistant Principal and authorizes the Notice of Decision Not to Renew Administrative Contract.
Second.
Summary of that?
Yeah, thank you. That is further, enables us to further the discussion about the efficacy for the Assistant Principal Position. There are contractual guidelines and state deadlines that we have to meet. And so, at this time, we're doing that just to meet those deadlines, but we're still, of course, having that conversation, of course, playing it out through the principal replacement process. And after that is over, then we'll make a decision based on all of those factors and other factors with the Assistant Principal Position for next year. So, this just enables us to further the conversation later.
Okay. Any additional discussion among Board members? Okay. Terry, roll call vote, please.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Terry Carney, yes. Kim Burke?
Yes.
Eric Coney?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Next action item, Resolution to Authorize Notice of Decision Not to Reemploy Teachers' Aid. I move that the Board of Education approves the Resolution to Authorize the Notice of the Decision to Not Reemploy a Teacher's Aid.
Second.
John, summary?
Yeah, it's based on seniority. This is the least senior teachers associate or aide that we hired this last August, and not based on performance whatsoever. It's just an enrollment, protecting the district to make sure we have the ability to make our flexibility decisions later on. We know the kindergarten enrollment and our needs for next year.
And right now, our kindergarten enrollment for next school year is...
Forty-six half-day and 12, or forty-six full-day and 12-half-day, which is right in line with where it was last year at this time.
And how many kindergartners do we have currently?
I was gonna say, yeah.
Eighty-eight.
Yeah.
Eighty-eight total?
Yeah, it's, yeah. Which is about where we're hitting. I mean, for a few years now, it's kinda settled out about ninety, give or take a few.
And that number continues to change, as I remember right up to the start of school.
Yes.
So, last year changed a lot in the last two weeks.
Right.
Right.
All right. Any more discussion? Okay. Terry, roll call vote, please.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Eric Coney?
Yes.
Kim Burke?
Yes.
Terry Carney, yes. Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Next action item, Possible Action as a Result of Executive Session? None. Next action item, Consent Agenda. I move to approve the following items on the Consent Agenda as listed on the screen and printed on the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion or questions on any of the Consent Agenda items? Okay. Terry, roll call vote, please.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Terry Carney, yes. Kim Burke?
Yes.
Eric Coney?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Okay. Onto new business, E-School Ceremony.
Yes, that's mine. Just wanted to remind the Board and those watching at home, in our audience, that we are going to have a very brief, very low-profile, like, open-house sort of, for E-School on a Sunday right before the demolition, that I'm working with folks at the VLEET Center to organize that. As I live across the street, there will be very low labor here. I'm gonna go over and open the doors, and stand there and make sure I'm still around while people walk through the building if they want one last time. But, it's not, there'll be no pomp, there'll be no circumstances, all right? This is, this is really...
There will be no real expense.
No expense at all. None. There will be no food, there will be no, no. There will be me walking across the street after church to open the doors to the building and to allow people to come through. And we'll, we'll post the times that people can come through. But, just for anybody that wants to take a picture or anything like that, that's really what this is about. It's, there's not gonna be a guest speaker. There's not, I mean, this is really, really low-profile. But, there's been enough folks that have asked that they can go through one more time, we thought, rather than going over every time someone asked. We would just have one day that we would leave it open for a couple hours for people to...
Any of the folks at the VLEET gonna be involved in this in some way?
I've asked for their help to come, you know, kinda...
Right.
Be docent, standing around the building.
Right, yeah.
You know, be some people, but they're, you know, out of the kindness of their heart, they said they would help me.
Yeah, there are a few people at the VLEET who have been very involved in that building for decades, and who also were very involved ultimately in our decision on what to do with the school.
Absolutely. And they continue to help, and so...
Are supportive of it.
We'll lean on them one last time for that. So, it will be, as I said, no, very, very, very low-scale. But, just a reminder that it will occur.
Thank you. Any other new business anyone wants to bring up? Okay. Onto old business, the Pending Construction Project and the Mural Removal Relocation.
All right, I just, it's been a while since we talked about our pending construction project, so I wanted to bring the Board up to date on a few items. Asbestos work will begin at E-School, asbestos abatement work will begin at E-School next Monday, and will be completed by March 11th. And to go along with your goodbye to E-School, there will be holes in some flooring and things, so for that day, we'll need to make sure it's safe and tape off some areas for access. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting last Wednesday for any contractors wanting to bid on the job, and we had seventeen people sign up. I'm gonna guess that represents anywhere from ten to twelve actual different firms. So, this was a good showing. And if they don't come to that meeting attended, they cannot submit a bid. Bids are due March 8th. We're pretty excited, can't wait to see what we get, but it's good timing. I think we'll get some good bids. We'll be meeting with the ROE in about two weeks to obtain our building permit from them, as well as a demolition permit for the E-School. There will be some discussion, and I need to inform Mr. Blackmer that during construction, traffic is gonna be required during the day, construction traffic, to head west on Sheridan Place, which is currently one-way east, rather than allowing them to circle around Vincent Court. And so, that's gonna be one way in, one way out. So, we're gonna have to work with the Village and Mr. Blackmer. There'll be some times that's blocked out, and certainly that'll be bell times. But, we'll work on that. We have learned that we may have an underground storage tank somewhere on the property of E-School. I've been on the state fire marshal, nothing's ever easy, let's just say it.
Ground penetrating radar.
Well, I, hey, I said that. I said, I'm familiar with ground penetrating radar.
We're getting loads of experience.
Done that before. But, anyway, the state fire marshal's office website does indicate we have a thousand-gallon tank somewhere on the property. Last used in 1972. We do know that there was a garage behind E-School which had an oil pit. That could be what has been classified. But, right now, we don't know where, we don't know if, but stay tuned, we're working on it.
Sure Kathy O'Hara remembers where it is.
I'm not going there. The mural has been removed. They removed it last week. It took them three hours total to remove that with the old wheat paste from 1930. So, I didn't get to see any of it. I think it would've been kinda fascinating. But, the woman that was involved with that was also the same woman who headed up the, or the...
Restoration.
Restoration, thank you, of that mural. So, when they asked me where we were gonna store it, I said, "With you." So, they are storing it for us and keeping it, 'cause we, I'm gonna take that responsibility on. The final place for it is still to be determined. I know we really want it to be in the LMC at the elementary school, but they're working on how it will be protected with some plexiglass or whatever. It is so large, it's gonna have to be almost from floor to ceiling. And so, we don't want lots of little hands coming or touching it. So, they're working on the logistics of how that would be possible. So, if it's not confirmed, that that's gonna be the home. So, yet to be determined, but that is our first choice, and they're going to help us make that determination. The last thing is the email I sent to you today regarding the frontispiece of E-School and the location on the property at 121 East Sheridan Place. And the information we got from the Village is that it requires a sixty-foot setback, which puts it at almost the exact same place where it is right now in the front of the building. You can move it out maybe about six feet. So, there's a topic that the Board will need to wrestle with, I guess.
And just to backtrack, we had originally...
We had wanted to put it somewhere on the perimeter of the property, so the piece of property is one open green space. But, right now, with this sixty-foot setback, it's gonna place it somewhere in the middle of the property.
And we determined, we have to disassemble it and reassemble it.
Yeah, it'll be...
We cannot leave it where it is now, because the foundation and various things have to be rebuilt there anyway.
Yeah, it really has to be, yeah, it'll have to be kinda rebuilt to...
Right. So, we gotta move it somewhere. And the discussion we also had is we didn't wanna put it somewhere where someday, twenty, thirty years from now, whenever it is, that middle school needs to be replaced, and the intent is to build new junior high school over where E-S is. If that's in the middle of the property, that would have to be deconstructed and moved again, and that was a real concern that we had. We didn't wanna put it someplace where we're gonna have to dig it up again and move it.
Well, not to mention what it would do to our green space, having it right in the middle.
Yeah, it there, right. So, our options are what? To comply with the sixty-foot setback or file for...
Seek other remedies.
Some sort of variance? Is that what we're saying?
Or, or...
Which I don't wanna do.
Or abandon the plan.
Or abandon the plan.
Do we consider the plan?
It's up to how you want to, you're not gonna resolve this this evening.
Yeah, but...
But, if you want to send this to Finance Facilities Committee for further investigation, I'm gonna be scheduling a meeting here.
Yeah, I think we should.
Or if it's something, if it's something the entire Board wants to meet and discuss, we can make that arrangement as well. So, it's, I say Finance and Facilities Committee, seems to fit perfectly there. Do we get bids on how much it's gonna cost to take it down and reassemble it? It'll be part of, it'll be part of the whole bid. Okay.
We did get an estimate on, in general, what it was gonna be, but, and it didn't really matter where we put it. So, the cost doesn't impact, it's putting it in a place that makes sense.
Yeah, it was gonna be placed on the existing property. If it has to be packed up...
And moved over, if we're gonna put it over any other school, then...
It could add some cost.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be a change.
Were you joking about the helicopter?
Yeah, you can airlift it, yeah. We can do anything you want, it's just a matter of dollars.
All right, so Finance and Facilities will look at that and then bring a recommendation back to the Board. If you could just let us all know, Jane, when that Finance and Facilities Committee meeting is, so that we can...
It's gonna be pretty soon, so...
Right, soon, so we can talk about this.
The earlier meetings, the group really did wanna save that piece of the school.
It was a really big statement that was made, yeah.
Yeah, we wanted to do that, so we're gonna have to put our heads together.
Is there anyone else in the Village that could be put?
I can't answer that question. We talked to the VLEET folks about this one, too?
Not about this. We can definitely talk to them about it and see what they'd like to do. I have a meeting tomorrow night, so I'll ask them.
Just, was there any discussion about, with anybody in the Village or with the zoning Board on this at all, other than, here's the setback, and that's it?
We don't, this hasn't been zoning Board. This is, this is from Village Administration.
Okay, good.
Personnel that have told us, explained the setback.
What ordinance does this pertain to, or...
I've got a copy of it if you want.
Yeah, you guys can get into that at that night.
Seems like it might be worth, you have Finance Facility having a discussion with the Village to really understand what, how, what they would recommend we look at before we go forward. I mean, maybe they'll recommend, well, let's do a variance. I doubt it, but we should at least talk about that.
Just reschedule.
Yeah, right.
Right. We have to get moving on that pretty quick.
I can take an action item on that. I can talk to Drew and just, and to George, maybe, and say, "All right, here's what we wanna do. We're gonna schedule a meeting. Can we meet first? Do you guys wanna come to me, sitting representative," and that kinda thing, and we can...
Great, thanks, sir. All right, any other old business?
I have something.
Yes.
I know in the process of the project that we're doing now at the middle school, we also talked about the music space, and made I know that we talked about some scheduling and things for music spaces, and I also looked at some possibilities of rearranging downstairs. But, have we decided that rearranging downstairs is not a good idea, and maybe scheduling doesn't wanna hurt that far yet?
Yeah.
Place.
Yeah.
Microphone.
While you do that, it is included in the bid specs as an add alternate to do some work in the old band room to raise the ceiling to allow for some risers for coral. So, it's an add alternate, which means we'll get a bid, we can accept it or not.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
Not exactly.
Okay. Can you tell me again what you'd like me to speak to?
My question was, is we had talked about this possibility of maybe changing something downstairs, but in the event that there isn't really a satisfactory option that we want to explore for reconfiguring something downstairs, we do have obviously one large music room that we're using for band, but I know that there are times when we have a hundred students together in the choir.
Yeah, logistically, it is difficult to share the new band room space, in part because the Fine Arts is a team just like the sixth, seventh, or eighth grade team, which means they are all teaching at the exact same time. So, while Mr. Beasy has a band class, so too does Ms. C have a chorus class. So, sharing the space is a bit difficult with the constraints that we have in our current master schedule, not to mention the equipment demands of the band classroom. In some cases, even if they weren't teaching at the same time, converting the classroom from a band room to a chorus room with the risers that are required is somewhat of a difficult task.
So, sharing the space is gonna take some real creativity?
Yeah, it's a real challenge, I'll admit. That's a real challenge.
How many periods do we use the band room?
How many periods do we use the band room?
Yeah, in like a given day, is it fifty percent, is it?
The Fine Arts periods are third, fourth, and fifth. They have two planning periods and a lunch. So, the rest of the class periods, there are classes there.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary Jane?
Yes, microphone.
Yeah.
Okay, any other old business?
None.
I didn't hear you, you're calling over here.
All right, closed session. I move that the Board of Education enters into closed session to discuss personnel.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. We are now moving into closed session. Thank you. Thank you.